Good morning. I call to order this March 24th, 2020, virtual meeting of the Celine County Board of Commissioners. For those of you that might be watching or calling in today, bear with us as this is something new for all of us. If you wish to participate in the meeting, you will need to dial 785-621-0800. And you would then enter participant code 782956, followed by the pound. If you wish to speak either during the public forum or when the chairman requests public comment on an item, you must dial *9 on your phone. This will alert the moderator who will open your line. Further, I wish to announce that when the public is participating in a public meeting by telephone or other medium of interaction, communication, members of the body must take steps to help the public understand the proceedings despite not being physically present. For example, each speaker in the meeting should identify herself or himself by name before speaking or voting, so remote listeners or observers can more readily know who is speaking. Likewise, each motion should be clearly stated and each vote tally clearly announced. That having been said, I will ask our clerk, Jamie Doss, to call the roll, please, Jamie?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
I ask that you please stand, those that are in attendance, and join me in a flight salute, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, now comes the first point of contention here, if it is a point of contention, but we will have a citizen's input where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and items that are not on today's regular business. Phil, do you have anybody on the line wishing to speak? We'll wait a few seconds.
Commissioner, I see no one who has raised their hand at this point.
Okay, seeing none, we will bring it back to the commission. The consent agenda today, is there any item that a commissioner wishes to remove or amend before we act on that? Hearing none, we will approve the consent agenda as presented. We will move to item number one, and something a little bit differently today. I will read the items rather than having to go back and forth with Jamie and have her have to identify herself and so forth. Item number one is an RFA 138-20 copier agreement with Sherri Kraus, grant budget specialist with community corrections. Sherri, are you with us?
I am.
All right, the floor is yours.
Okay. We are requesting commission approval for modification of our service agreement with ImageQuest. Our current service agreement is 94.38 per month and covers 12,000 images for one copier. We would be adding another copier to the existing service agreement. The service amount would then be 121.88 per month, or 1,462.56 per year, approximately.
And you want to go ahead, your alternatives for action?
Yes, we would request that you approve the modified service agreement. Alternatively, you can deny the request or suggest another option for us.
And I would add, according to this, that your budget impact is, the expense of this agreement is included in community corrections fiscal year 2020 budget.
Correct.
So, are there questions or comments from commissioners?
No.
Hearing none, I will take a motion to approve this item, this RFA.
This is Commissioner Shadwick, and Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the service agreement with ImageQuest as presented by staff.
Commissioner Weiss, I second the motion.
Okay. Chairman Vidrickson, it has been moved and seconded, that we moved by Commissioner Shadwick, seconded by Commissioner Weiss, that we approve RFA 138-20 copier agreement by signature, the service agreement with the ImageQuest as presented by staff.
Commissioner, we have no one who has requested to speak on this RFA.
Okay, hearing no public, I'll ask first, is there any public comment or which, anyone wishes to speak via the telephone on this RFA? Seeing none, all of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
We'll take this by virtual vote. Commissioner Weiss?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
And Commissioner Vidrickson, aye. So passes 5-0. We will move to item number two, which is RFA 143-20, 2022 High Risk Rural Road Program, presented by Justin Mater, our county engineer. Justin, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Good morning.
Okay, good morning.
So, Celine County has been awarded a high-risk rural road project, often referred to as HRR, on Simpson Road between Magnolia Road and Crawford Road by the Kansas Department of Transportation. This project will add shoulders to the roadway and regrade the ditch slopes with flatter slopes. All drainage structures will also be extended or replaced as needed. Funding for construction and construction engineering utilizes a 90/10 cost share with a maximum of $414,000 of federal funds. The bid letting is scheduled for year 2022 with construction in either 2022 or 2023. In order to accept these funds, Celine County must submit a project programming request, referred to as Form 1302, to KDOT. Couple alternatives for action, the first alternative is to sign the project programming request and accept these funds. Option two is to do not sign, do not sign the form and reject the funds. Staff's recommendation is to sign KDOT Form 1302 and accept these funds. As far as the budget impact, the estimated local project costs are $58,000. This will include 100% of the right-of-way and utility adjustment costs, and 10% of the construction and construction engineering costs. These funds will be taken from the 127 account, which is a special highway improvement fund. This account currently has an unencumbered balance of $1,314,355.26.
Okay, Chairman Vidrickson, this was, to start in the calendar year 2022, is that correct?
Yes, see, this is actually in the, for the funding of it, it's in KDOT's fiscal year 2022, which I believe starts in July of 2021. So depending on how they have this project scheduled, KDOT will define a project letting date, and they won't assign that letting date until they receive this 1302 form. So it kind of depends on when that letting date falls, and that KDOT fiscal year 2022 is really when the project will be built.
Okay.
So right now, so that's why I'm kind of estimating some timeframes.
All right, are there further questions from commissioners? Hearing none, I will ask for any public comment regarding this RFA? We'll wait a few seconds for someone to chime in.
Commissioner, no one has raised their hand.
No one, seeing no one on the action, I will go for a motion from the commission, please.
Commissioner Shadwick here. Mr. Chairman, I move we accept by signature the 2022 High Risk Rural Road Project as requested by staff.
Commissioner Weiss here, I second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 143-20, 2022 High Risk Rural Road Program by signature. And are there any further comments from commissioners? At this time, I will call the roll for the vote. Commissioner Weiss?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
And Commissioner Vidrickson, aye. The motion does pass 5 to 0. We will move to item number three, which is an RFA 144-20 Railroad Crossing Projects, again with Justin Mater, our county engineer.
So the Kansas Department of Transportation has programmed two Union Pacific Railroad projects to add crossings with gates on Celine County roads. The first project is located on Mere Road, just south of K-140 Highway, and it has a DOT crossing number of 818-399P. And the second crossing is located on Gellstab Street, hopefully I'm pronouncing that right, in Bavaria, east of the grain elevator, and that has a DOT crossing number of 818-403C. KDOT is requesting Celine County to sign three copies of each railroad crossing agreement. Each crossing agreement is a three-party agreement between Celine County, the Union Pacific Railroad, and the Kansas Department of Transportation, and identifies the responsible parties for construction and maintenance of the highway crossing signals. So just to summarize, the UP Railroad will be responsible to build and maintain the projects. KDOT is responsible for 100% of the funding for engineering and construction costs of the projects. And Celine County is responsible for the advanced warning signs. The alternatives for action is to, one, to sign both agreements, or two, is to not sign the agreements. Staff recommends to sign both agreements. As far as the budget impact, there will be no budget impact. You know, Celine County is responsible for the advanced warning signs. However, currently there are advanced warning signs already installed at those crossings, because right now they are what's classified as a passive crossing, and so it's just, it's pretty much the advanced warning signs and then the cross box that the railroad supplies at that crossing. So the signs are already there, and so there shouldn't be any impact for, to Celine County. Any questions?
Commissioner Vidrickson, in the eye of safety, I see no reason why we would, and no cost to the county whatsoever, I would see no reason for us to be in the way of this process of putting these up. So, any other comments from commissioners?
Nope.
Hearing none, or how about anyone on the telephone wish to comment on this?
Commissioner, I have no one who has raised their hand.
There is, seeing none, we will call for a roll vote, or a motion first, I'm sorry.
This is Commissioner Shadwick. Mr. Chairman, I move we accept by signature the agreements with KDOT and the Union Pacific Railroad for railroad crossing projects as listed.
Commissioner Weiss, I second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 144-20 Railroad Crossing Projects by signature, the agreements with KDOT and Union Pacific Railroad for railroad crossings projects as listed. I will now call for a roll call vote. Commissioner Weiss?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
And Commissioner Vidrickson, aye. The motion does pass 5 to 0. We will move forward to item number four, which is RFA 145-20 Bid Award for Traffic Paint and Beads, again will be presented by Justin Mater, the county engineer. So, Justin, you have the line again.
Okay, thank you. This request for action is to discuss and take action on a Celine County Road and Bridge Department request to award a bid for waterborne latex traffic line paint and reflective glass traffic beads. Field bids were opened on March 10th, 2020 at 11:00 a.m. Nine bids were received. You should each have a bid tabulation of the details for all the bids. So just a little bit of information, the Celine County has 175 miles of asphalt surface roads. We will be having 176 miles after the Waterwell Road Improvement Project is complete. So this bid includes 2,750 gallons of yellow paint, which is enough to repaint the center line stripe on all of our asphalt roads. The bid also includes 5,500 gallons of white paint. With this volume, we'll cover about 75% of our roads, our asphalt roads. And so with the, the goal of our striping is to paint a five-inch wide line at a thickness of 12 to 14 mils. So if you look at the bid tabulation, I included two alternatives this year. Alternate one bid meets KDOT current paint specifications and is referred to as a high-bill paint, and this allows for the paint to be placed down at a thickness of around 20 mils. This is what the Road and Bridge Department has bid out in the past. Alternate two bid is a, I bid out a paint that does not specify a certain acrylic polymer like alternate one, and so with not specifying that high-bill polymer, we were hoping to get some reduced prices on our paint, because we're really only interested in painting around that 12 to 14 mils. And so that's the purpose for having the two different alternates. So as far as the alternatives for action, the first alternative is to accept a bid as indicated by staff, and option two is to reject the staff. Staff recommendation is for the yellow and white traffic paint to accept a low bid from Vogel Paint and Wax Company Inc. for the amount of $8.64 per gallon for the yellow paint, and $8.30 per gallon for the white paint. For the reflective glass traffic beads, staff recommends to accept a low bid from McConnell and Associates for the amount of $0.34 per pound. With the quantities that we had in the bid, this will have a combined total expense of The budget impact, staff recommends that the funds to purchase the traffic paint and beads be taken from the, our paint and beads account. This account has a current balance of $80,000. The remaining $11,982 will be taken out of the account 127, which is a special highway improvement fund, which has a current unencumbered balance of $1,314,355.26. I do plan on adjusting this line item a little bit in the 2021 budget, you know, to help have a balance of what we're trying to accomplish for painting our roads.
Okay, Justin, Commissioner Vidrickson, I noticed on your spreadsheet that you have contractors. Now, that doesn't mean that Vogel Paint and Wax Company, who's the low bidder here, we still do the application, we, Celine County, is that correct?
That's correct. That's probably not the correct, or that should be more of a vendor.
Okay.
I apologize for that.
Yeah, I wasn't quite sure what that meant, and then, so I'm clear on it then. So Vogel Paint at $69,410, and McConnell and Associates for the beads at $22,572, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, are there other comments from commissioners? Questions?
Yes, I have one. This is Roger Sparks. And I would like to just ask a question and an observation, is that on some of the county roads that we are now putting down some, not rock, but some very dusty material, and last year when we put down the side stripes and everything else, well, just in a few weeks, you hardly really could even notice that there was any stripes, and it's still that way kind of around the county. And I'm just wondering, last year, I think we allocated an extra $15,000 to go from a four-inch white stripe to a five-inch, and I'm just curious if we should keep doing the five-inch instead of the four-inch on these roads where just after a few weeks, you really can't notice that anyway? If that's a pertinent thing to be doing?
Yeah, it's something that, you know, what we've, I've talked it over with staff and with Darren Fischel, you know, about, do we even need to be, you know, on some of our lower-volume asphalt roads that we chip seal, do we need to even be painting the edge line, you know, for that first year? You know, so, you know, that's something we're going to be evaluating as we go through this, you know, so we're ordering paint, and you know, right now, it's to cover, cover all of our roads that we are going to chip seal, but if, if this year we decide not to chip seals, or I'm sorry, not to paint some of the roads that we did chip seal, we'll just use that paint to, you know, paint some of our other roads, you know, that could use a little touch-up, you know, that hasn't had a maintenance project this year, but the paint's still wearing off a little bit. I'm pretty confident that we'll have better chip retention this year. I've made some modifications to our chip seal specs, because I think one of the biggest issues we had last year was that we didn't have very good chip retention. And so when you start losing chips, the chips that are even, that are still maintained, they're have enough room to kind of roll around and to get kind of ground down into a pretty dusty, dusty material. And yeah, I agree, we did not, we didn't keep our edge line very good at all, and so with the changes I've made in our specifications, I'm pretty confident that we'll have better chip retention, and if we have better chip retention, we'll have a better, we'll do a better job of keeping that white edge line a little bit longer. It still won't be like an asphalt, a road that just received an overlay, you're still going to lose some of that retention, you know, just from the characteristics of a chip seal, but I'm hoping to make a big improvement on that this year.
Okay.
So, and to go back to your, the width of the stripe, so the current practice has been, you know, using that four-inch edge line, and the reason why we wanted to bump that up is actually, the FHWA has done quite a bit of research on low-cost safety improvements to roads, and going from a four-inch edge line to a six-inch edge line is, for whatever reason, it proved to be a very viable safety improvements for roads. You know, and so what we, what we do is, we're going up to a five-inch because our truck is not set up to do six inches wide. We would have to make some modifications to our truck, and I think probably have to purchase new guns. But one thing that we can go from a four to a five is if we raise our gun off the pavement a little bit, it sprays a little bit wider. It does give us some troubles, because we got to be careful with wind, you know, because the further our gun is away from the pavement, you know, the wind's going to cause that overspray a lot more. But that's, that's why we wanted to go to a five-inch, is just because it's proven that a wider edge line does provide some safety benefits.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Vidrickson, Justin, is there a KDOT or a federal guideline that needs to be followed, or, you know, a guideline that they suggest that you do still do the chip and seal roads, or where do we stand on that type of a situation?
No, there's no guideline for any kind of a pavement maintenance, really any kind of asphalt management at all. I mean, there's some suggestions out there, but there's no guidelines that we must follow. And every, every county kind of does their asphalt road maintenance programs differently. You know, so there's nothing that we must do.
Again, Commissioner Vidrickson, I would suggest that we try to maintain that, that striping on those chip and seal roads, because it's a proven fact that the white lines on the side of the road at night, they are a safety factor, and they really do help. So I would hope that we could find some way to chip and seal, make it a little more adhering to the paint, and get the material to stick in there as better than what we've had in the past, so that's my feelings. Are there any other comments from commissioners? Hearing none, before we, I would ask for a motion on this, on this RFA.
This is Commissioner Shadwick. Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid for traffic paint to Vogel Paint and Wax Company, and the bid for reflective glass traffic beads to McConnell and Associates as listed in RFA 145-20.
This is Commissioner Weiss, I second the motion.
All right, with the motion and the second, are there any public comments that wish to be made at this time? We will pause.
Commissioner, I have no one who has raised their hand.
All right, are there any other commissioner comments? If not, I will say that we has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 145-20 Bid Award for Traffic Paint and Beads to Vogel Paint and Wax, and the bid for reflective glass traffic beads to McConnell and Associates as listed in RFA 145-20. At this time, I will ask for a roll call vote. Commissioner Weiss?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson, aye. The motion does pass 5 to 0. Thank you. We will move.
Thank you.
Yes, Justin, thank you. We will move to item number five, which is RFA 140-20 Construction Manager at Risk Contract with Hannah Stambaugh, Deputy County Administrator. And good morning, Hannah.
Good morning, commissioners. This request for action is for the approval of the chairman's signature for the agreement between Celine County and Turner Construction Company for their construction manager at risk services in regards to this Celine County jail project. In your packet, you did receive a copy of the different exhibits and the agreement as well, that has been reviewed by both administrations, as well as county councilor, as well as our assurance partners. Your alternatives for action are to authorize the chairman's signature or reject this agreement and direct staff to make other modifications. Our recommendation is for the chairman to sign the agreement with Turner Construction Company for their construction manager at risk services. The budget impact is that Turner's fixed fee for pre-bond services is $58,000. This expense will be taken from the Celine County CIP account, and as well, the commissioners know that Turner has already begun work on this project with their participation in our town hall meetings, interaction with staff, as well as their direct contact with Trainer HL. Under separate authorization, which would be after a successful passing of any bond referendum, Turner's fee for their construction phase is 2.25 of the guaranteed maximum price, regardless of what option is chosen to move forward with.
Okay, we'll open up the floor to commissioners for comments. Nobody has one? I will open the lines up for comments.
Commissioner, no one has raised their hand.
All right, no one has raised their hand, and I would make the comment that this by no means, means that we're going, we're just going to try to keep our timeline going with the jail project. What, six months between now and seven months between now and the time that the public votes on it? It could all change. In today's world, everything could change, but we do need to, as a commission, we have a lot of money invested in this project, and we need to move forward. a lot of money invested in this project, and we need to move forward with our timeline and let it all shake out at the end. So, that having been said, I will take a motion.
This is Commissioner Shadwick. Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the agreement with Turner Construction Company for the construction manager at risk services for the Seline County Jail project.
Commissioner Weiss, I second the motion.
It has been, this is Commissioner Vidrickson, moved and seconded that we approve RFA 140-20 Construction Manager at Risk Contract by signature with Turner Construction Company for construction manager at risk services for the Seline County Jail project. Are there further comments from commissioners? Okay, I will go for a roll call vote. Commissioner Weiss?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson, aye. The motion does carry five to zero. And thank you, Hannah.
Thank you.
We will move to item number six, which is a temporary COVID-19 Advanced Pay Leave Directive with Marilyn Lemur, Human Resources Director. Good morning, Marilyn.
Good morning, commissioners. We are asking for commission approval to provide an advanced leave option in an effort to reduce some hardship for employees affected by COVID-19. This would be for employees that have either depleted their leave time, or maybe new employees that haven't accrued enough leave time for situations like quarantine, isolation measures, arranging or providing for alternative childcare due to the school closings. As employees would earn their time, they would then pay back what is granted in advance. So this would be, provide some relief up until April 2nd, when the Families First Coronavirus Response Act takes effect. So we are asking commissioners would approve this, and if so, we would get a notification out to employees. There would be no additional budget impact, salary dollars are all budgeted, and they're basically just borrowing against their future accruals. Effective April 2nd, the Families First Corona Response Act takes effect, and that does provide for some financial relief in two different areas. There is an emergency paid sick leave act, and then there's also an expansion to the Family Medical Leave Act that provides some relief as well.
Okay, well, we're obviously in uncharted times, uncharted territory, when it comes to this type of a procedure. Marilyn, I want to compliment you on how much you've been involved in this process and kept commissioners and staff informed, and, you know, the proactive position that you've taken to have these steps in place for our nearly 300 employees. So I would ask for comments or questions from commissioners? Anyone wish to speak?
Commissioner Weiss, Marilyn, the only downside I can see to this is that you do run the risk of having some payroll paid out that if a person would leave, they don't have the ability, or they haven't taken the ability to put money back into the pool as far as sick leave goes. But I think the benefit of having this temporary COVID-19 outweighs the risk of, outweighs the risk of having that deterrent of not getting the money or the hours repaid.
This is Marilyn, and we would have a piece in there where if they have not paid back that and they're leaving employment, that we could have an equivalent amount of pay withheld from their final paycheck.
I see. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from commissioners? Hearing none, I would take a motion from the commission.
Commissioner Shadwick, Mr. Chairman, I move we approve temporary COVID-19 Advanced Paid Leave Directive effective March 15, 2020.
Commissioner Weiss, I second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve a temporary COVID-19 Advanced Paid Leave Directive to be effective, retro, effective March 15, 2020. Are there further comments? If not, I will take the roll. Commissioner Weiss?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson, aye. The motion does carry five to zero unanimously. We will move to item number seven, which is Employee Policies, again with Marilyn Lemur, our Human Resources Director.
Good morning again. We have several policies that we had drafted up some changes to. All of the policies have been reviewed by the department heads and elected officials with some minor suggested revisions, and those are indicated on the copies that you did receive. So just very briefly, the funeral leave policy would add verbiage for step-grandparents and step-grandchildren. The policy for health and dental insurance adds verbiage for the four-tier plan and cost shares that we had added with our new plan year. Procurement, purchasing, and contracts, that changes the public notice to an issuance of a notice, it's not required to be published, and the changes with the engineer amount due to state statutes. The responsibilities to report to work in adverse situations, it expands the section on responsibilities in situations that may cause a closure, describes announcements of closures for essential employees that could receive some paid time off at a later date. Employee ID cards, it identifies that the electronic records are kept at emergency management, and it adjusts the expiration date of the ID cards from five years to four years. We have a new policy for field training officers and Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration trainers that have certain requirements and pay. It does provide for a 5% differential during the time that the trainers are performing those tasks. A new policy for county credit cards, it outlines procedures for access, documentation, lost and stolen cards, acceptable and unacceptable uses, and so forth. And the final one is an employee years of service recognition program, where employees would have requested time off in lieu of the small logo gifts that we have historically given. They would receive anywhere from four to eight hours, depending on their years of service, of additional vacation time. We are requesting these policies be approved as presented, and if approved, we would arrange to get the chair's signature on these policies so that we can distribute those to employees.
Are there comments from commissioners? Questions?
Commissioner Weiss here. Marilyn, one question on the policy on funeral leave. Just a little bit of confusion on my part. If, if an employee's mother-in-law should pass away and they want to attend a funeral, that doesn't fall under funeral leave, but would they be allowed to use either sick leave or vacation time or a personal leave to attend this funeral?
For mother-in-law, that is actually considered under the current policy. It's the immediate family of the employee or their spouse. So that does fall under the funeral leave one.
Okay, I see that now.
When it goes beyond, I'm sorry.
Yes, I see that now, and spouse. I missed out on that.
So if it goes beyond those relationships, like for instance, maybe an aunt or an uncle, niece, nephew, those relationships, that is where the sick leave could be used for the, attending a funeral.
Okay, thank you, Marilyn.
You're welcome.
Further questions or comments from commissioners? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion.
Commissioner Shadwick here. Mr. Chairman, I move we accept by signature the employee policies as presented.
Commissioner Weiss here. I second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we accept by signature the employee policies as presented. Any further comments? If not, I will call the roll. Commissioner Weiss?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
And Commissioner Vidrickson is aye. So that motion does carry five to zero. Are there any administrative updates? None at this time? Any commissioner comments?
Nope.
None at this time? I want to thank everyone for your indulgence in terms of how we've run the meeting. I hope it's been satisfactory to everyone. Obviously, we're in very trying times. Practice safe health policies and guidelines, and stay tuned to your local health department, your KDHE announcements, the governor's office, the federal, so on and so forth. So together, we can overcome, as they say. So, at this time, I would take a motion for adjournment.
This is Commissioner Shadwick, so moved.
Commissioner Weiss, I second that.
It has been moved and seconded that we adjourn today's meeting. Again, I will call for a roll call. Commissioner Weiss?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
And Commissioner Vidrickson, also aye. So at this time, we will then call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.